Okay, I do have that it's 2:30 and we do have the Salina Net Generation Tennis Group with us today. I don't know Chris Cotton or Mike Scragg if either one of you has something to lead us into this or if you want them to go ahead and get started.
Yeah, this is Mike. I'll kick it off just a little bit. Commissioners, as I'm sure you're aware, the tennis courts have been a deferred maintenance item for us. They've been a topic of the Park Master Plan conversation. They're in our Park Master Plan priority list. And so that's been kind of a focus for staff, but no immediate solution identified or funding source. Meanwhile, Net Generation, and I'll let them introduce themselves and explain a little bit further, has been working with us in coordination for quite a while now, talking about how they might try to tackle something similar to what Baseball Enterprises tried to pursue with baseball. And they've done quite a bit of impressive work. They have some good ideas and a lot of enthusiasm. And so what we've done is put together what I think is kind of a three-part presentation. I've asked Chris on behalf of the Parks Department to talk about the current condition of our tennis courts. And if we were going to just pick up where the Park Master Plan says we should, what that might look like. Then the second part of that presentation, I want to give Net Generation an opportunity to explain to you their vision and their proposal. And then the third part is back to Chris, talking about if we took Net Generation up on their offer, or we tried to pursue that approach, what that might look like in terms of our ongoing operations and maintenance and cost. So first, I'll give Chris an opportunity to add any additional detail that he might like, and then we'll dive into his presentation.
I don't have any additional information to what Mike said. He kind of said exactly what I was going to say. So the first presentation I'll give, the second presentation Clark and the rest of the tennis group will give, and then we'll come back to the third. So Jacob, if you want to pull up the first slide, we can get going. Okay, let's go ahead and go to the next slide. So as you can see on this slide here, originally when I was doing my research, it looked like I could, I found some construction documents from 1947 for courts in Oakdale. So at the time, I just assumed that's when the first tennis courts were built. However, as you can see on this, on this survey of Sunset Park in 1933, we had tennis courts located where the tennis courts are today. Of course, the tennis courts to what would be the west are now the horseshoe pits. Okay, we go to the next slide, please. And then this is Oakdale in 1933. And as you can see, we also have tennis courts on a survey from that time as well. Again, the earliest construction documents I could find in Laserfish were from 1947. So I was shocked to find that we already had courts there in 1933. Okay? Next slide. And then in 1938, you can see where that was again surveyed. And those would be the furthermost south courts that you see at the top of the screen. And then the road is right below that. Next. 1947, these are actually the documents in Laserfish. The courts are proved to be built by ordinance 5271. I can only surmise that these replaced the courts that were there from the 30s. These courts are concrete cement courts. And out of all of our courts, those are actually in the best condition right now. Next slide. And then the north courts are redone in 1966. Next slide. 1974, the Oakdale East Courts are resurfaced. Next slide. This letter here is just simply to indicate, this is at the time that Jerry Ivy Park came online or was in development talks. You can see that the board at the time was accepted, receptive to an offer of $1,300 an acre for 24 acres of land. And then underneath that, you'll see that we were to build four tennis courts on the site mutually agreeable for the school. So part of that land swap for us to get that was to build the courts. That's okay, Jacob. You're good. 1975, Oakdale West Courts resurfaced. Next. Other improvements and repairs. Fencing was added to Oakdale and Sunset in 1974 to cost $25,594. The Sunset Courts are resurfaced in 1979 for $14,150. Courts were recommended in the 1985 master plan for Airport Park, but they were not built. Sunset was once again resurfaced in 1990 for $22,000. Oakdale Courts resurfaced in 1994 for $33,000. Jerry Ivy was resurfaced in 2002 for $11,000. Oakdale is resurfaced again in 2006 for $51,000. Sunset Courts resurfaced in 2010 for $15,000. Jerry Ivy resurfaced in 2014 for $37,728. Those are all the ones that I was able to find in Laserfish. There may be others, but those are the ones that I was able to find. Next slide. So from the master plan, oh, there we go, Jerry Ivy Park. If you look down at the bottom of the screen, you can see where it's highlighted, where it says that some cracking is beginning to develop in the tennis court surfacing and may need to repair in the next five years. We're going to come to some pictures that show that it needs it now. Next slide, please. Oakdale Park, recommendation from the master plan to remove all tennis courts. If a new 14-court tennis center is constructed at Kenwood Park, if the tennis center is not constructed, existing courts will need to be rebuilt. Notice that terminology is rebuilt, not resurfaced. Next slide, please. Sunset Park, recommendations at the very bottom. Remove tennis courts if a new tennis center is constructed. Next slide, please. I know there's been a lot of conversation in the community about pickleball. Pickleball lines were added to Sunset in 2011. If you read the excerpt from the master plan, it says, "Citizens did not rank the upgrade of tennis courts nor the need for pickleball courts very high in the survey. Nonetheless, all existing tennis courts must be upgraded or abandoned. Pickleball is one of the fastest growing sports in America, and it is possible that citizens of Salina are not familiar with the activity because it is a relatively new trend. Evaluate partnership opportunities with the private sector and schools for a contemporary tennis center, which is what we're doing right now. Abandon all tennis courts in town if a new tennis center is developed at Kenwood Park. And then repurpose the lighted skate park facility at Centennial Park for four each pickleball courts. Although pickleball is not rated high on the ETC survey, it is near the top of the list for the fastest growing sports in America." As part of this project, we did meet with a contractor out on the horseshoe courts as the horseshoe group is recently disbanded. The estimated cost to turn those courts into pickleball courts is between $150,000 to $175,000. Next slide, please. Kenwood Park, under recommendations, construct a 14-court contemporary tennis center. Next slide, please. This is just a rough sketch that was put together for the Parks and Recreation Master Plan, showing what could happen. Obviously, with working with the Salina Net Generation, they have a different concept. It's a really great concept, and so we'll get to that with their presentation. Next slide, please. This is, what you're looking at right now is the GeoTextile Fabric Repair System that we've used over the years to try to repair the cracks in the courts. And I just wanted you to see this because later on I'll refer to this as a Band-Aid. I just wanted you to see actually what it was and what it looked like. Next slide, please. Again, this is more looking at the GeoTile, GeoTextile Fabric. And the reason I have several of these pictures is I want you to understand that these truly are just a large Band-Aid that goes over the cracks once there's, once the cracks are sealed or filled. This does not solve any of the existing problems we have. You can see the one on the left where the material is coming up. And on the picture on the right, you can actually see the material underneath the tennis playing surface. Next slide, please. Just more patchwork of this together where it's coming apart through expansion or shrinkage of the product. The picture on the right, you can actually see where the, where the cracks have redeveloped and actually separated the material. Next slide, please. Okay, this one here is, if you look at the picture on the left, this is, the picture on the left is actually at Sunset Park. You can faintly see the light green pickleball line on the, to the kind of left of the screen, followed by a crack in the material. And then you can see part of one of the patches where the line is. You can see part of one of the patches is starting to give. On the right, that is at the same park. And you can see where another section of the material has shrank and is actually starting to come up on its own. And you can see where the cracks have redeveloped, where the material, the fill material has failed and sunken into the courts and how it's opened up even further. Next slide, please. This is just a picture of Oakdale as they look today. Next slide, please. Another view of Oakdale. You can see the pin in the foreground that shows you how wide the cracks are. These are actually pictures that were taken by Tom Perrin last year. Next slide. Current condition of Sunset Park Courts. Next slide, please. Another view of Sunset. Again, the white green lines that you see, those are our pickleball court lines added to that court. And then this is Jerry Ivy. I took these pictures, let's see, the thing went out to you Thursday. So I took these pictures last Wednesday, just to show you how quickly it's deteriorated since the master plan was done. You can see in the middle of the, the middle, you can see where that's actually, I believe, an expansion joint from when those were originally built as concrete, concrete courts in 1974, '75. But all of that is failing throughout the entire system of courts over there. And then you can see where the recoding has come up off the original coating all the way down to the concrete. Next slide, please. Another view from Tom Perrin on the failing of the material of the courts, how they're coming apart. And if you look on the left, you can actually see how deep the crack is by the pin sticking up out of the crack. That's just to give you more perspective on how deep the cracks are and how severe they are. So option number one, if we, if we just fill all the cracks in existing courts in our system, estimated to be $3,527 per court times 15 courts, that's $48,855. The courts will look patched. There's no guarantee the cracks will not come back or elongate. And this does not solve the ongoing problem, which is a crumbling base and no drainage. So we'll spend all the money to patch them, only for me to come back to you in another couple of years and say we need to patch them again. Option number two is fill the cracks, resurface, use the GeoTextile Fabric Repair System, Band-Aid, new color coating. I have two different vendors that have quoted me on this. The first one is for $15,127 per court for $226,905. The second company quoted $27,468 per court for $412,020. They just have a difference in the way that they go about doing things. But both of those recommendations or both of those options simply entail filling the cracks and putting another Band-Aid over what's there does not solve the ongoing problem, which is a crumbling base with no drainage. Option number three is to rebuild all the courts traditionally. That's $53,092 per court times 15 courts for $796,386. This process would include grinding down all the original courts and use that, the remnants as the base for a new court system, which would all be overlaying new asphalt over them. Eight courts for Oakdale, essentially $424,736. Four courts, Jerry Ivy, $212,368. And three courts at Sunset, $159,276. And as they were remilled and repoured and relayed, we would need to address the drainage and that would be part of this price. Next slide. Option four, which is what staff recommends, if we do not pursue the other, the other option, is to rebuild on top of the existing courts as a post-tensioned concrete cable system. $357,381 for Oakdale. $165,436 at Sunset. Four courts at Jerry Ivy, $202,644. New LED lights for 15 courts, estimated to be $544,395 for a total of $1.2 million to solve the current issues with the courts. And then this is the advantages of post-tensioned concrete courts. Basically, they have a much longer lifespan than asphalt. The cables in them and the way they're poured will eliminate all cracking issues and all current problems that we have with the courts. Asphalt courts can take up to 90 days to be rebuilt. Post-tensioned concrete, 12 days to be reopened and back in use by the public. Next slide. And this is a view of, of Kenwood Pool when it opened in May of 1946. With that, I'll turn it over to Clark.
All right, thanks, Chris. Jacob, can you get our first slide on there? Perfect, thank you. First of all, I want to thank the commission. I know a couple of weeks ago, we had the opportunity to present on the naming rights for that footprint. And that was a big step forward for this project and for us to try to get to the point of getting the necessary funding needed. But appreciate that. That was a big boost and appreciate the opportunity to be in front of you as a group today. There's several of us on the group, I think maybe all of us on the Zoom right now that have been instrumental in getting this thing moved along for the past three years. And the cooperation with the city, the school district, and everybody's been, been awesome. And this is an opportunity really for our group to, to say, you know, this, we feel this is a community project, not necessarily just tennis. Tennis certainly is, is the focal point in the sport. But really, we see this as a project for the entire community with the site and what it brings to really Salina as a whole. So appreciate that opportunity. And we can just kind of go with the next slide. And our mission really is to focus on how do we, how do we address the issue right now facing the community where we have essentially no quality, no safe tennis courts available for the general public? And how do we resolve that? And how do we do that in a way that makes sense for the entire community and the plans that have been put in place? So, you know, that, that's our mission and that kind of, kind of sets the tone for where we want to go from here. So next slide, please. This is a layout of a concept that is a potential for the site. And we'll get into some pictures here in a bit. But this is really an aerial view. As you look down, the pool house would be there on the left. And the courts are positioned in a way, people ask us a lot, why not kind of configure them in a way where you can get them more in a pattern that, that you can get more courts in a certain footprint? Courts in the northern hemisphere have to be set up in a certain direction, north-south, really to be in the best location, the base, best setup. So that's why you've got that angle, the way that is. This was done by Jones, Gillum, Rens and Charles Rens. And they've been an incredible partner with us as we kind of looked to put this together. So this is how that was structured, as you see in this site. And we'll get into this a little bit later. There's 12 courts. I know when we originally had talked, we talked about, and this is a couple of years ago, in 2018, possibly 14. We'll get to kind of where we got to 12 and then the opportunity to add more on this footprint because this, this site has a lot of advantages, not only for this project, but I think the community as well. But you have, you're not landlocked and you have opportunity to grow. And I firmly believe, and I know our group feels the same way, we'll have the opportunity to grow these courts and we'll need that, we'll need that at some time in the near future. But it allows for that. And if you notice there, it's got that on the far right to the east of these courts for that, for that future development if and when needed. Next slide, please. Again, Chris showed just some pretty detailed slides. This is more of the same. That continues to deteriorate. And we just look to find out how, as a community and how as a group, can we partner together to get this resolved and not only address it now, but put us in a position where we'll be much better off down the road as well. And we firmly believe we can get there collaboratively and working together to, to find that solution. Next slide, please. Again, overlook of the facility. This is looking north over the Bicentennial, the Tony Pizza Event Center and kind of a layout of how that might look. Again, this is conceptual. You'll notice the courts. You'll look at, you'll look at a shelter structure. A hitting wall is there as well. And again, room to grow there to the, to the east. And we'll get into again, more of the advantages of what this site brings as well. Next slide, please. Again, aerial view there. And just kind of look at some of the spacing and some of the opportunities for parking around the area as well as across the street. Next slide, please. And then again, looking kind of west to north there, from there. And one thing that kind of, again, this, this, and we'll get into this a little bit more detail as we talk about the site and its advantages. But you've got a natural windbreak there to the north with the trees along the river. And there, it really is an ideal site and provides a ton of different advantages, both naturally and aesthetically and from a programming and operational standpoint as well. One thing I'll point out too, you'll notice the, the courts and the layouts, you know, what's the, what's the advantages of having laid out one way or the other? And there's lots of different ways you can go. We try to look at it from, you know, both a recreational standpoint, which is this, is first and foremost is a recreational opportunity, but as well as a competitive venue to provide events as well. And these courts laid out provide that, a little bit of mixture. Really, there's no way to get one versus the other and you try to blend that in. So that's what we tried to accomplish here, to make sure that we address all those particular issues and needs. Next slide, please. So today, I won't go over this in too much detail. Chris pretty much covered this, but you've got 15 courts, public inventory here. Oakdale may have lights, Jerry Ivy has lights, but not sure if they, how well those work. Sunset Park has three courts and a total of 15. The other courts in town that are not public, I haven't listed all those because the Country Club has four, but Central High School has eight. They're not lighted. They have two courts that are set up for lights. But those were built about 10 years ago in a public-private partnership effort. They are not open to the public. And then Kansas Wesleyan has three courts that currently are in disrepair and not used by that school as well. Next slide, please. So we want to talk a little bit about kind of where we've been, where we're at and where we'd like to be. I won't gloss over too much. I think the commissioners know kind of the history there. But really, you know, Salina has a long history of public-private partnerships. We certainly think this is an opportunity to gather all the stakeholders. And we look at these three primarily, but others have been involved as well. And we try to get as much information and as much input as we can to make sure that we're addressing all the particular needs. And we know there's no way to get everybody in and address all of them and get everybody taken care of. So we try to look at what's the best option on a fixed, finite budget that can give the best advantage, not only for the community, but really for that, for that, for that much for the entire region as well. So we've collaborated, worked together. USD 305 has been instrumental in this process. They certainly have a need and a use for these with both the middle school and the high schools. And from, you know, long history, they've used public courts in Salina as part of their sites to hold events and practices and whatnot. So tennis is a middle school sport. It's a high school sport, obviously. But you've got a tremendous level of numbers of kids participating at the, at both the middle and high school level. But the partnership is brought together. It's been fantastic. I think the dialogue has been, been terrific. I think everybody knows the need and how to address it. It's just a matter of now, how do we get from point A to point B to get it, get it finished? Next slide, please. I'm going to, Chris Upson, I believe, is on the call. And I'm going to kind of turn it over to him a little bit and talk a little bit about 305's partnership and their role in this effort. And how Jerry Ivy, we talk about the Kenwood site and the 12 courts there, but also part of this whole project is how USD 305 and how Jerry Ivy Courts fit into this as well. So I'm going to let Chris talk a little bit about that role and then I'll pick it up after that. Chris, can you take on, take that on?
Yeah, sure can. Hi, I'm Chris Upson, the Executive Director of Operations for USD 305. We, we've been engaged with this partnership from the beginning and have tried as a school district to figure out where we, where we best fit into the project, the idea, where we best fit into tennis. And what we've come up with is a need to have facilities close to, tennis facilities close to our attendance centers, which we have at Jerry Ivy. We obviously have our courts at Central. So what we're proposing as part of this public-private partnership, city, for us to work through the details of transferring part of Jerry Ivy Park, where the tennis courts are at, to USD 305. Thereby, we would take over all maintenance responsibilities of those courts. And that in the, in the, in the course of the next several years, and you can go to the next slide, please. And there's the courts there. Next slide. So what, what we're proposing is that we, we can carve off a little piece of Jerry Ivy Park there to be USD 305 property. We maintain the courts. We would propose that if, if this project's move, project moves forward, that we would take over the property and then resurface the four courts that are there, repair the four courts that are there yet this summer. In the out years, probably no earlier than 2023, that we would rebuild the four courts that are there and two to four additional courts on that site that, that at least some of those courts would be for public use. We would not do what we have done at Central. We would maintain some of them for public use. And that, that's, that's our, that would put public courts on the south end of town. This is, this is the, kind of the wishes of USD 305 to be a part of this, a part of this project.
All right, thanks, Chris. Next slide, please. So just touch on a little bit of the history of tennis. And we've, we've mentioned this to the commissioners in the past, but just touch on a little bit about what tennis is and how it's part of the DNA in Salina and has been really for over 60-plus years. It's, it's really had a success from the local level all the way to the national level. And you look at numbers, both at Central and South and, and other Sacred Heart numbers are growing. But you look at USD 305 numbers and they're, they're large, both girls and boys, both at the middle school and the high school. I think this year, Central or South girls had over 30 girls on the team and they're trying to practice on four courts. And I know, talking to Coach Stewart over there, many times they had to take people off the court and off to the side and work on stretching or something else. And the, and the same thing can, you can look at at both the middle school level at South and at Lakewood. They, Lakewood practices at Oakdale. They had over nearly 20 girls in their junior high program, a middle school. And South, nearly the South middle, the same. Central girls this year, they average nearly 20 a year. I'm not sure that the number this, this fall, girls high school and middle school play in the fall. Boys, middle school and high school play in the spring. But the numbers rival those of other sports that have much, much bigger participation, at least on the field. You look at football, certainly not big numbers, and baseball have big numbers. You look at football, certainly not big numbers, and baseball have big numbers just with positions. But these sports rival, if not exceed, a lot of those in terms of participation. So that historically has been the case in Salina, just because of the infrastructure and how at a grassroots level, Salina's supported tennis. It's kind of ironic that it's the only state that we don't hold a state tennis tournament in because we don't have the, the resources or facilities, yet it's arguably our strongest sport at the high school level. And you, and I look at that from a, from a number of state championships that they've won at the high school level, both boys and girls. And way back when, back in the eighties and seventies, they hosted the Kansas State Closed Tournament, which was the biggest junior and adult tournament in the state of Kansas, which is a USTA event. And Ken Nordbo, who the Oakdale Courts were, were named after, Ken was instrumental in, in helping coordinate that, as were many other folks that helped put that together. But that, I believe, ended late eighties, mid eighties. And we, we haven't hosted or held that type of an event since then. And primarily just because of resources and other reasons, but that, that's primarily the case. Next slide, please. So we look at this opportunity and, 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 you know, how does it tie in with what the city's doing? And how does it tie in with Parks and Recs? And, you know, does this make sense? And how does it make sense? And we look at, you know, part of the Parks and Rec, Parks and Rec Master Plan is taking care of what we have, expand what we have and fund a new vision. Well, we certainly look this, look at, you know, right now, we have tennis courts that are not being taken care of. So first and foremost, how do we take care of what we have? And that's one of the solutions that we want to come forward to, to how to address that. Next slide, please. So we asked, you know, why Kenwood? Why now? Why, why is this the spot to do it? Why not? You know, I know at one point, early on, way back when, there was consideration of putting courts outside of Salina or outside of the, the area. And it, it really, when you, when you look at it, this site is ideal. It's, it's, it's dilapidated. It sits right at the doorstep of our newly renovated downtown. It's right across the street from our civics center and it looks horrible. And I can tell you as a Rotarian, I go to Rotary meetings every Monday, or I did when we, when we weren't in COVID. And you drive by there and you're like, holy cow, this is, this is what people see when they come to our, our community events center. And, and, and so we look at that and we're like, we talk about how we can repurpose and how we can, we can do those types of things. So there's an opportunity. Existing courts are unplayable. They all must be rebuilt. We know that. We know it's a liability and it's a safety hazard. And we've got to get to a point where how, how we can address it. The, the 12-court model, and we talked about critical mass, is it provides, critical mass is key in the standpoint of, it provides opportunities, both recreational and competitive, for programming and for events. And when you look at it from a standpoint of, well, what about pods throughout the city? And, and, and have every neighborhood had a local court? That isn't feasible in, in, in really today's model, nor does it make sense for recreational events when you have lots of kids or lots of adults and you have camps or you have a clinic or you have group lessons or different types of programming. That isn't conducive to, conducive to that type of opportunity. This critical mass and a lighted court model gives you that and it, and it gets us in a situation where we have, you know, on, on par with some of other peer communities that are at, at our size or even smaller. We want to look at this where it's advantageous to the city and it's less expensive than what it would take going it alone and kind of meeting the, the particular numbers that Chris went over earlier. There's space to expand at that footprint, as I mentioned earlier. And there's parking already in place. So you've got perimeter parking around the, the, the site. And then there's also, also areas in that vicinity that can be used as parking as well. Next slide, please. Again, talk about the transformation. It's centrally located right on the doorstep of downtown, provides plenty of opportunity for, for economic impact for downtown as it brings in not only tournaments. And I, we, our group certainly doesn't want to be here and say, hey, these courts are going to be built and we're going to hold the US Open here. We're not saying that. We're, we're saying we'll have the opportunity and certainly with our location and the lack of, of other facilities in the near, near vicinity, we'll have opportunity to do that. And you certainly have people involved that can advocate and advise and assist in bringing those towards, whether that's working with the city or the chamber or whomever. But there's an opportunity there. But we certainly don't want to bring this and say, hey, this is going to bring a gazillion dollars of economic dollars to the city. It will, and it'll bring more than what's currently being provided from that site right now. But we, we also want to make sure that we understand this is a recreational venue opportunity as well. We address the unsafe court conditions for schools and community. And, and that is, that's probably putting it mildly. If you go out there and you have some of those courts, it's, it's scary on the condition they're in. Next slide, please. So we talk a little bit about what this means for the city and why this is, we think, we believe, an opportunity that can, can save the, the city dollars, but, but still get a bigger and better product. So today we have 15 courts, eight at Oakdale, four at Ivy, three at Sunset. And as Chris Upson mentioned, the partnership with the school district looking to take over the Ivy Courts and keep those public. And then moving our 12, the Kenwood, the Salina Net Generation Courts to Kenwood gives you 12 there to 16. So basically, the city goes from 15 courts to only 12 courts having to maintain, but gets 16 brand-new courts for, for the general public. And we just think that's a, that's a model and that's a, an opportunity that makes sense for a lot of different folks. Public support for tennis is strong. The opportunity to learn the game right now is minimal due to lack in safe, safety of quality courts. Again, I get a lot of people that say, hey, Clark, why aren't, you know, I, I drive by and I, I see some people out there and some people I don't see, or I don't see the courts being used. I think primarily, a lot of that is, there's demand in, for tennis in Salina. You certainly see that from the high school and middle school level and even from there, but also at the adult level. I mean, there's people from, from five to 85 playing tennis. And it's a sport you can play your whole life. And whether you're competitive or not, it's, there's an opportunity for people to get involved. It's got a low cost of entry. And it's, it's certainly something this, this community has built and has a strong reputation of, of supporting. But I think as you have quality venues, people will play more. And it's kind of like the broken glass syndrome of a, of a broken down house. People just don't care anymore. And it, you gain apathy and, and kind of walk by and people throw a rock through a window. They don't care. And I think that's what's, to some degrees, happened to our tennis courts is we've kind of let that deteriorate. And that isn't a city fault. I'm not here to say that's a community issue. And that's, that's where we come together and say, hey, how do we all collectively come together and fix this? And, and moving forward, how we, how do we reduce that? And I, I think the opportunity is, is there. Again, with the exception of Salina Central, all the 305 schools utilize the public courts. And we talked a little bit about that and, and the role that USD 305 will play. Next slide, please. So we talk about day and night tennis available at this venue and we want it to be free to the public. We want people to come down and we want people to use it and, and, and to play. And tennis courts are a lot like a road. It's, it's, these are post-tensioned concrete. They need to be resurfaced occasionally and usually that, that's usually about every 10 years, plus years, depending on, on how much, who you ask and how that's, that's done. But that's roughly the, the average. And so they need to be resurfaced. And that's usually about $5,000 to $7,500 a court every 10 years. But we want these to be available day and night and we want people to use them. We want programming. We want opportunities there for people to, to take advantage of it. But we, we need to get courts built. We need to have some facility where we can get this put together. And again, not only address what's happening today, but provide opportunity down the road for the community. Next slide, please. So scope of project, talk a little bit about, we'll, again, Charles Rins and Jones Gilliam Rins has been awesome on helping us put together kind of some of the details of this. We originally talked to the commission a couple of years ago and at that time, we were looking at 14 or 12. We were trying to figure out what's, what's the best solution with the limited amount of resources. 12, we feel like will get us where we need to be and, and it'll give us an opportunity to, to do more if we need to. The 2.3 million range, that includes the courts and the pool house and getting that up to snuff. And that's really where we've been. Jones Gilliam Rins, our, our whole total was up to about 2.6, but it included features and amenities that may or may not be included, that could be added later or may not need, be needed at all. So that's really where we are kind of on that cusp of, of right around 2.3 million range. If we can get it lower, we, we'd like to try to do that. You know, what can the city and what can we arrange to, to get that site prepped to maybe minimize some of those, those costs? Those are things that we, we need to, to hammer out. Chris Cotton mentioned the, the post-tensioned concrete and some of these others. That's, that's what most courts today you look at are being built with post-tensioned concrete. It's the most, it, it's just the best quality, longest-lasting way to, to go about doing it. And, and some of the courts that we've, that Chris talked about in his presentation, were not done that way. But, but that's the way that we, we feel is in the best interest. Central's courts were done that way and they were built roughly 10 years ago. And that, that really gives us a kind of a good benchmark of, of how we want to see those, those look. So we look at, how do we get there? If you lose, if you use 2.6 and we really think, we're confident that that could be a, a figure lower than that, depending on how we want to approach this thing. But we've raised to date, as of today, we're over 1.1 million in, in pledges and donations. And we need to figure out, how do we get the rest of this and what that number is going to look like? How do we get that, how do we get that raised and completed to complete the master plan? Next, next slide, please. So in those cost estimates and alternates, these are some of the, the things that we've addressed that go into that. And the pool house, or we'll call it the clubhouse really, because we, we look, you know, it's not going to be a pool house any longer, provides a lot of opportunity. It's an existing structure that could be repurposed, doesn't need to be demolished. It's still got electricity. It's got all the utilities, water piped into it. It really provides a great resource for this facility. Do we need all of it? Does the, the site need all of it? Maybe, maybe not. But you, you really probably don't need to use it unless you have an event there or, or some sort of tournament. So it doesn't necessarily be, need to be used 24/7 or 365 days a year. It can be used on a limited basis. But you do want to have restrooms or something that are available to the public that are available while it's open. So these are just kind of some of the, the things we've looked at in the cost estimates and things that, that may or may not be able to, to be taken in and out of, out of the estimate. Next slide, please. And then we talked a little bit about security of the courts. And, and certainly today, all the courts around the public courts, the 15, are pretty much open to the general public whenever they want to get onto them. And that's, that can be detrimental if you've got people that are skateboarding or riding bikes or, or whatever. But part of it too, I think, is just the, again, it goes back to the, the state of the, the courts and the conditions. I think people don't really care and, and, and people are just over there doing whatever they want to do on those courts. So we want to have, you know, I think it's up to the city to decide how, how they would want to see that. But I think there's various options to keep it to a point where you do protect the asset and the investment and you want to make it last as long as it can. And so there's different options there that could certainly be considered and looked at to, to maximize the, the investment and, and keep it secure. Next slide, please. So how will construction still be paid? We look at private funding, grants, naming rights. All those will be part of the equation and will be needed. Again, I, I go back to the naming rights. That was a big boost for us and certainly an opportunity for us to, to accelerate the opportunity to get the funds needed to get this construction and, and project off the launching pad. Next slide, please. I'm going to turn this next slide, next couple of slides over to Samantha Angel and she's just going to touch on some things that we considered on the, on the facility.
Thanks, Clark. Good afternoon, everybody. Thanks for your time. The question is, can the courts be financially self-sustaining? And of course, to steal an answer from Mr. Bankston, the answer is it depends. Our idea's always been that the courts will be open and free and accessible to the general public, just like they are now. But there are some ways to generate some revenue for future maintenance or needs at the courts. Could do something like the sale of yearly tennis passes, like they have at Kenwood Cove or the golf course. And purchase of a yearly pass might get you access to an online court reservation system or a key card so that you could access the courts after hours to play, something like that, some kind of perk that you get for your yearly pass. You could do individual court rental fees, just like folks pay to get into Kenwood Cove or to use the municipal golf course. Probably have to be a minimal fee, less than $5 for an hour. Or maybe you only charge the fee during peak hours in the evening or early morning when folks are playing during the summer. Of course, court rental fees to third parties who want to use the new venue to host tournaments or events there. Fee-based programming for kids, for juniors and adults, if we're going to put programming on at the courts. Tournament fees and entry fees, whether those are a USTA or a UTR tournament, we would be able to collect tournament fees and entry fees and raise some money that way. Of course, there could also be year-round fundraising, donations and grant requests that would generate income as well. And then hopefully in the clubhouse, we'll have some equipment and snacks and drinks and we can make a little bit of money selling that to folks that come to use the new facility. Can I get the next slide? Thanks. So we've done some research on different operating models and what might work. And really, as we move forward toward getting all the money donated and starting construction, we really need to maintain communication with Chris and Mike and the commission to figure out what the city's vision is for this new facility and how we want it to look moving forward with programming. It could simply be where we build the courts, turn it back over to the city and walk away. And it's similar to what Oakdale looks like today with maybe Parks and Rec running some junior programming in the summer. But other than that, it's just a facility that's open to the public to come play tennis. We talked about, could there be a partnership, whether it's just with the city and a nonprofit, or is it a three-way partnership with that generation, the city and a nonprofit to work together to try and generate some programming at the courts and what that would look like? You could also do a partnership with a for-profit entity, which is what Cosover has done in Topeka. It's the county and the Topeka Tennis Association and Genesis there. And they've come up with a plan that works for them for programming at Cosover. There's an idea, we could become a self-sustaining nonprofit with a director and staff, similar to like a community theater or something like that, where there's a nonprofit that hires a director and a pro to run programming there. The first T model, of course, is a nonprofit geared generally towards youth just beginning in the sport and learning how to play. Could look something like that. It could be a completely city-run and staffed facility, similar to Riverside in Wichita, where city hires a director and tennis pros and they put on programming and host tournaments at the facility. There's also a couple of different locations in town, of course, that have indoor courts and hopefully there can be some kind of agreement or partnership with the city and those, the entities that own the indoor courts to allow for, for some crossover and sharing of the courts during the winter years when we can't use the outdoor courts. Next slide, please. This is just an example of what like an online reservation system might look at if we put something like that in place for the new facility. Next slide, please. That's all I have. I'm turning it back over to Clark.
All right. Thanks, Samantha. Thanks. So here, here we have, this is our, our final slide and we just talked a little bit about all right, where, where we are at and where we need to go and next step. So, you know, one of the things that we, we looked at collectively as a group is, you know, as we, we create this vision, this project, you know, ensure that we don't have this conversation 10 years from now and we can't, we built something that we can't and we can't, we built something that we can't sustain or we can't maintain. And ensure, as Samantha mentioned, on some of those ways that maybe there can be some dollars recouped or however we do that, is just ensure that it's got the proper budget that's directed directly to that project and we can ensure that the maintenance of that. And primarily, the biggest part of that maintenance is just, as we talked about earlier, resurfacing that, but also the general upkeep and maintenance of the site, which is going to be key. Again, we look at approval from the city, a resolution of support that allows us to move forward and which would include the transfer of the Ivy Park courts. But also, it gives us the chance, if we need to get additional funds raised, to get in front of the general public and say, hey, the city supports this, we've got formal approval, we've got X number of time to get it done, or it may not happen. And so that gives us that resolution of support and that, it gives us, again, another springboard to get the project across the finish line. So again, that goes into complete fundraising, execute agreements with the three entities, complete the site work, get the courts transferred to USD 305, get the court construction and facility set and then game on. And that's our, that's kind of our vision and our thought process. And we'd certainly like to open it up for discussion and address any questions you may have.
Okay, does staff have any comments before I open it up to the commissioners for questions and comments?
Go ahead, Chris. I was going to say, I think that we would probably want to go over the last set of slides that I have that talks about some city costs to make things happen and before we have the questions and answers, because I think some of your questions are pertaining to what I'm getting ready to say. Jacob, it's the last slide, slide number three. There we go. Can you go to the next slide, please? So the estimate to remove existing structures, we estimate $21,780 to eventually remove the Sunset Courts. To remove the existing Oakdale Pool, the one that was capped in the 50s to become an ice skating rink, $77,000. To remove the existing Oakdale Tennis Courts, $43,441. To remove the Kenwood Pool, $106,391. And to remove the rodeo grounds, $75,500 for a total of $324,112.50 estimate. Obviously, this could happen in different phases, it wouldn't all have to happen at once. The first thing that we would need to do would be to remove the Kenwood Pool and the rodeo grounds. Next slide, please. We estimate the cost to reopen the Kenwood facilities. Remember, those were closed when the new water park opened. And essentially, the facilities haven't been touched since, other than Parks uses it for storage. The electrical would need to be updated, best estimate, $12,500. The windows, a lot of the windows have been broken out since the facility was closed, $2,200 to repair those. Currently, the front and rear entrance doors are roll-up doors, so we actually need to put new doors in. We estimate that to be about $18,000. Plumbing, we need to repair the supply and drain service. Install sink and toilet fixtures in the original locations, estimate $22,500. Install two ADA showers with changing rooms in the men's and women's restrooms, estimate $15,200. The wood soffit around the facility needs to be repaired, $4,600. We talked about, there's been several mentionings of running the facility, only having it open when we need to have it open, very similar to how we run and maintain Carver and Friendship Centers. So we think that by putting an exhaust fan in there to keep the air circulating during the hotter times of the year, that would save us on the, on major HVAC costs, but an exhaust fan would be $7,600. So a total facility opening budget, $82,600. Next slide, please. Estimated future costs, average utility and maintenance cost estimate, $17,095 per year. With all LED lights on the courts, the lighting cost would be minimal. And if we run the facility similar to Carver and Friendship where it's only used as needed, that would keep our staff maintenance down. The average cost to replace a tennis net is $179, that'd be $2,148 for all 12 courts. The average cost to resurface courts every 10 years, $7,500 per court. I know Clark mentioned 5,000 to 7,500, but I wanted to be safe, so that's $90,000. And I think that's the last slide. Yes, so now we'd open up for any questions that y'all may have.
Okay, commissioners?
Well, if somebody else is ready to go first, go ahead. I'm still writing my questions.
Okay, I'll go. I've been writing them down throughout the presentation. Mr. Cotton, one of the things that I don't see in your estimate for dealing with the existing facility, is there any thought to what might be necessary to make the exterior a little more attractive than it is? Of course, just getting rid of the pool and the old fence and so on will help. But in terms of the building itself, is there something we can do to spruce that up a little bit? Have you given that any thought?
Well, as part of replacing the wood soffit around the building, that would help a lot. We did, we did look at that. We did not budget to do any major renovations to the facility, to the exterior. If you look back at the presentation that Clark gave, the tennis group budgeted $200,000 for interior work to the facility or work to the facility. Our plans would be just to, very much like if you were a business moving into the mall, they'd give you a blank canvas to work with and we would just fix all the structural stuff and turn it over to them. So we have not done a lot of any, really any work, other than fixing the wood soffit for exterior work. Obviously landscaping, we trim up the trees and make it presentable again, but we don't want to take away from whatever it is the tennis group may want to do.
Okay, those of you who know me, no, I'm not a huge sports advocate. It's not that I'm opposed to sports, it's just not, it doesn't jerk my chain. I did watch the Chiefs last night and it was an ugly win. But, you know, I like the layout. Clark said something about some people saying, well, why don't you change it to get more courts in? But it's attractive. I mean, it's interesting, maybe not attractive, interesting. I agree with most of his comments on the location. You know, it's accessible to downtown, it's accessible to Ohio Street as far as access off the interstate. It would be a great showpiece compared to what we have now for events at the tennis event center. I think there's definite advantage to consolidating courts at one location in terms of, you know, particular, if you want to have events there, that just, you know, that seems like that would almost be a requirement to do something like that. You know, I am, with respect to the Jerry Ivy Court, I noticed that Clark was a little more enthusiastic about those all having public access than Chris was. And I, you know, that's something that I would consider to be very important. You know, and it's, you know, continuing maintenance, as much as I don't want to say this, one of the things about continuing maintenance on city facilities is an advocacy group to bring that to our attention. Because what's probably happened with tennis courts, they've gradually deteriorated. People continue to use them, but there's been no group saying, hey, this needs to be, you need to take care of this. And, you know, it's unfortunate, but that's the way things work sometimes. So I think that'd be important moving forward is, when we put this into place, is to have some continuing input from that interest group. I don't like the idea of fixing the existing courts at all. You know, I just don't think that any of those options are realistic, even the quote-unquote "complete reconstruction." Asphalt surfacing just strikes me as an accident waiting to happen. I much prefer doing it the concrete way, doing it right, they'll last. Something that wasn't talked about specifically is, you know, you've, Clark, you've said something about a resolution of support, which I'm perfectly willing to do. Is there thought of a financial request from us to assist this project moving forward? And if so, how much?
Yeah, I would say, from our perspective, I mean, that's where we've talked quite a long in the dialogue it's been, is how would that look and work? And so when we first started having this discussion, the goalposts were, so to speak, at 1.2 roughly. And for only, the only reason for that was, how do we make this more affordable for the city and the community doing it this way versus going backwards and doing it the other way? And then that goalpost kind of got moved and to no fault of anyone's, other than the fact that it was uncertain, there was a pandemic going on and there was all sorts of variables that we didn't have control over. But as a group going out and trying to fundraise, which we had a very good success at doing that, but doing that in a way that, hey, how much do you need? Well, we're not sure. We know what the project's cost is going to be, but we don't understand from a city perspective what they're able to do. And you've got a site there that is dilapidated, that you could make an argument could have been demoed when the Kenwood Pool site was, or the Kenwood Cove site was done. And we didn't want to, and then we felt like, well, are we going to get lost in the shuffle where the city's got finite number of dollars and got a fiscal situation where they've got to address? And is that going to get lumped into our project? Well, we're coming in with a solution to try to say, hey, this could, this could work. So I guess to answer your question, Rod, I'm not sure we have a definite number, but we'd like to see where there's some skin in the game and the city has. I mean, they've got skin in the game. They've got the land there, we're having these discussions. But how do we make it in a way that makes sense for everybody? And how can we get to the finish line sooner than later? Because we all know we can't keep kicking the can down the road and having this discussion from a year from now. Because those folks that are eager to put dollars into this, that money will only be around so long. I know this is a long-winded answer and I don't, I don't really have the exact number in mind, other than, you know, what can we make, what can we do to make this fair for all parties and get this thing started sooner than later?
Commissioners, this is Mike. I hope this is helpful. The Sign and Net Generation's been great to work with and been very understanding in kind of our situation. I think I've been pretty frank that we don't have a lot of cash, free cash available. Our funding source most likely is the $500,000 a year we targeted as part of the Park Master Plan funding from the sales tax. And so our conversations circled around a couple of things. Number one, admittedly, it's deferred maintenance that's gotten away from us. You know, it's cliche, but if we keep doing what we've always done, we're going to keep getting what we always got. And all our history has been patch repairs on an sporadic basis as we might be able to afford them. And I don't think staff, you know, I think staff agrees with you Commissioner France that repairing or rebuilding is not preferred compared to post-tension concrete. And so the way we looked at it was, we do feel like we have an obligation in the Kenwood Pool, not only does it just need to be demoed, it needs to be prepped in such a way that it'll support the courts and won't fail. That's why that cost is what it is. And then the rodeo ground demolition, and frankly, if I had my way, I would like to remove all the other tennis courts. So we're going to find ourselves in a situation that, well, it's great that we have tennis courts at Kenwood, but you've got tennis courts in my neighborhood, you ought to repair those above and beyond what we just got doing in the way of a tennis complex. So I think my vision for our financial commitment was kind of those costs that Chris laid out, the upfront investment to prep the sites, the demolition, and then the ongoing maintenance. And I'm, you know, I'm hopeful that you get post-tension concrete in place, then that's a reasonable ongoing maintenance that we can manage and budget to. I've told Sign and Net Generation more than once that I view them as saving our bacon on this deal. And if they, if they come forward with the project that they proposed, they get us out of the hole we currently find ourselves in in terms of deferred maintenance. And then we might be able to take the handoff and get people back on our courts and get tennis going again in our community.
Okay, I would, I would suggest, I agree with the demolition of the courts. I agree with prepping the site. I agree that we're sort of culpable, we are culpable in terms of allowing the maintenance to get away from us. The $500,000 a year that's dedicated out of the sales tax, I am reluctant to commit all of that because we've got a lot of other needs that we need to address too. But I would certainly be amenable to discussing a portion of that, maybe structured in a way similar to the way we structured the Stiefel Theater improvement, that we put a certain amount out there every year, maybe over three years. I don't know if that fits the timeframe and structured such that that contribution is dependent on a match from private contributions during that same time period. That at least, I'm not a fundraiser, but that gives the Net Generation group the perspective of saying, hey, it's two for one, you know, if you, every dollar you contribute, we've got a match for up to a certain amount. And I wouldn't be at all opposed to, well, we need to talk about the amount, but, you know, it needs to be significant enough to make a difference. Let me put it that way. I think we have an obligation.
I think the format we talked about was, in this initial presentation, get a sense of you, whether there's support from the governing body, if there is, proceed with that resolution of support, resolution of intent. As Clark said, that communicates to them and to their donors that we're moving forward and there's value in pursuing the donations. And then shortly, you know, as quickly as we can turn it around, bring back an agreement that gets to the level of detail that you're describing.
And that's kind of, I mean, that's kind of where I'm at in terms of, is, because I look at the scope of the project, I'm sorry, I'm juggling the three different presentations here. And I see that we need about $1.6 million to complete the master plan. And we have a $324,000 potential demolition budget and the 82.6 to bring the old pool building up to snuff. And, you know, I think it would be helpful just so that everybody is aware of the expectations of each different entity. I'm fine with proceeding with the resolution of support, but I, I think that we've at least got to have some sort of theoretical agreement of how the, you know, what the cost sharing is going to look like in terms of, you know, if we're just looking at, you know, the demolition and the site preparation, you know, that's, that's one thing. If we are going to be looking for a funding source for a greater amount, we just need to be aware of that as well. And I just had a couple other questions slash remarks. I wanted to follow up on Commissioner France. He had directed a question toward Mr. Upson. And if we were to proceed with, you know, deaccessioning our tennis, Jerry Ivy tennis courts to USD 305, from, I kind of feel like this is, this is something that unfortunately, I think we kind of have to have all these discussions at the same time. Because I also heard kind of a lack of enthusiasm for, you know, keeping courts open to the public. And I understand that reluctance because I'm sure it makes them degrade more quickly. But that would be an assurance that as a commissioner, I'd want to know exactly how many courts are going to remain open and have that assurance before proceeding. And I don't know if that's something that Mr. Upson can speak to now or if that's something that's, you know, ongoing, under ongoing discussion.
We've, Commissioner Hodges, we've talked about half of the courts being open. Initially, all the existing courts that are there, the four courts that are there will be open. So in the first several years, we'll repair the courts and leave them open the way they are. In the future, when we build, replace those courts and build additional, the thinking is that we would have, some of those courts would be isolated and fenced off and half of them would remain open to the public.
So does, so does that look like we would always have three or, I mean, and that's something that I think it would be helpful to have nailed down. So does that mean that there will always be at least three or four courts guaranteed for public use?
I think, I think the intention would be that we wouldn't change what's available right now.
Okay, thank you.
Courts stay open, four courts stay open.
Great, gotcha. Thank you. Great, gotcha. Thank you. That's really, that's really helpful. The other thing is, right now, who does the Parks and Rec tennis programming? Is that done through Genesis still?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay.
Sorry, you broke up on my end.
I'm sorry, I'm sorry. I just wanted to know who did Parks and Rec tennis programming and its genesis?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay. And if my feed interrupts, let me know. I may have to get closer to my Wi-Fi source. The final thing is, I noticed that we have all these demolition costs listed. And I know that as recently as a couple of months ago, we did have a citizen who came to us with a proposal for reusing the the old Oakdale Pool Site that's now been filled in. And there's an art installation there, et cetera, et cetera. And I guess I'm just kind of wondering, you know, is, one, could we have a further discussion, not necessarily related to net generation, but in terms of what would happen, other uses for that old Oakdale Pool? And then the final thing is, one of our most heavily used parks is our skateboard park. And while the surface on the Kenwood Courts may not be, obviously isn't suitable for playing tennis, is it something that we could look at another use for some of these areas? Instead of just demoing them wholesale and I'm assuming just, you know, planting grass or having gardens, could we look potentially at other, at other uses that need the hard surface but could be adapted for a different use?
Absolutely. I mean, I've actually built skate parks in two other communities. I'm perfectly capable of turning one of those sites into a skate park. However, it's not going to solve the issue of the bases crumbling and the cracks are going to remain. So I could not feasibly take an existing tennis court and make it a skateboard park and have it be safe. I would have to, I would have to tear it out and rebuild it. Now, there has been talk with the Futsal Group about turning Sunset into Futsal Courts. Even though they have drainage issues, we could overlay that with basically what's called sport court tile and that would be playable. I mentioned earlier, we've talked to the pickleball group. We've looked at pickleball pricing between $150,000 to $175,000 to convert either one of those in Sunset to pickleball. Both scenarios with pickleball, it entails milling down and laying new asphalt on top of what's there. So the surface itself, in any situation, needs to be addressed. So while we have lights there, we have infrastructure there, it'll certainly decrease our costs. We don't have to start completely new. But the surface, the structure of the courts is still crumbling and I can't fix that.
Okay, I got you. I understand. And the final thing I'd just like to add, Commissioner France mentioned, you know, not being comfortable with dedicating that whole $500,000 a year for the special recreation use from the sales tax fund. And I think that I would, I would prefer to see us, if we have some, you know, ongoing maintenance issues that we need to address or we're going to have to be debt financing something, I would prefer to find another, another source for that. That's all I got.
Okay, just a few questions. I think that the project as it's presented is beautiful, to be honest with you. I wouldn't add much to the project. I do have questions about ultimate use and control of time on the court. I think there was a belief that there would have been more open time available at the downtown recreational center than what people perceive that there really is. You know, baseball, you got to have 18 other people to play with. So, you know, that's obviously sets up more for an organized sport. But there was a mention of, there would be public courts on the south side of town in keeping the Jerry Ivy Courts open. There's no mention for keeping courts open on the west side of town. And when you look at all of our parks, and I don't live near Sunset Park, so I don't really have the occasion to hang out there very often. It is probably the most complete park we have as far as beauty, or potentially complete. And, you know, my proposal would probably be the most expensive of all. But to rebuild those courts in Sunset Park, because there is nothing west of downtown otherwise. And, you know, I see a 12-year-old trying to come all the way over in the evening, where they can't come too late because at that age, they shouldn't be out late by themselves. And older people probably won't want to necessarily travel all that far. And we're not talking about people who are gearing up for competition. It's not the older ones, but just who want to go to a neighborhood park to, you know, if it's just hitting the ball off a wall or crossing the net, just lobbing the ball. I'd like to see what we can do to preserve the Sunset Courts. The skateboard park, I think, needs to be totally rebuilt. And either rebuild where it is or move it downtown so it becomes a tourist attraction as well as a recreational. And the other concern I have is what, you know, we've had several projects. I think Yogi Bear said deja vu all over again, where we have a project not on the CIP, we get a great proposal and it really is a great proposal. And it leapfrogs other things on the CIP. And all of a sudden, we're running around looking for the money and we already had things waiting on the CIP list. You know, this is money that we're going to have to come up with for future maintenance. And I'm hoping that it doesn't become something that people who normally would not have to pay much to use our courts now are going to be nickel and dime to use the courts. What type of planning is in the minds of Sina Net Generation as far as access to the courts in terms of time?
Yeah, I think, you know, our plan is the courts are free and open to the general public. And that's, it's the city's, it would be the city's decision on how you would want to recoup those funds. But our main goal is to keep what's happening today. We want, we want to get courts available, public courts available to any and everybody. And how that is, how that cost to recoup for maintenance, that's a discussion that the city would have to look at. Our goal is not, we want to get courts built, we want to raise the funds to get those courts built.
I mean, is there any expectation that donors would have, you know, if there's a tennis club or, you know, maybe with the exception of the school district? I mean, would there be priority assignment of time slots?
Yeah, I think the only thing you'd have to look at there, Doc, is the, you know, certainly the stakeholders that are putting money towards that. But there has been no expectation from people that if we've raised the million one that says, "Hey, we want, you know, we want to have, make sure we've got courts available for us." Their pure motivation is, is our mission, is to get courts that are playable and acceptable to the general public. And so you've got stakeholders like USD 305, certainly they're a role in this and they, they're going to, they're going to have a priority and they certainly are going to be a player in that. But we have not had anybody step up and say, "We want, we're going to give large sums of money to this project and we have expectations of having court time." I mean, we want it to be open and available. We certainly want, you know, events to be held there. And whether two people play on those courts or 2 million people play on those courts, the usage and the cost is going to be the same. And as long as the sun's shining, it's not raining, people can play, you don't have to worry about opening doors and...
Clark, I don't mean to cut you off, but we've only got about five minutes here.
Okay, so that's our position on that.
I guess my question would be, it's probably no different currently. I mean, if USD 305 has a, or has a South Middle or South or Lakewood tennis program, they already kind of have first come to those courts over at the park currently, correct?
They run that through us and we book, we reserve those courts for the schools.
Basically just be doing the same thing for tournament slash school play and practices.
Yep.
Doc, do you have any other questions?
No, I appreciate that. I don't think any of us would begrudge the schoolchildren priority for the courts. Certainly not during school hours anyway, or right after school.
Commissioner Ryan, any comments or questions?
I would just weigh in that I'm in favor of the resolution of support. It's infrastructure we obviously need. And I think the removal of existing structures and the Kenwood, Kenwood Facility reopenings, those are expenses that are manageable. I think the city's obvious skin in the game is how to deal with the pool over there in the Kenwood Building. And I'd like to hope we could find some, some extra dollars, not in that $500,000 allocated a year, but even if we have to tap a little bit of that each year, I think that's manageable and we can figure out a way to do it.
Well, as I was reviewing this, and it appears if we were just to redo the courts and not to the extent we're looking at, we would already have about an $800,000 investment, not including upgrading that building or tearing that building down over there where the old pool was. Because I don't know about any of my fellow commissioners, but I kind of cringed when we were asking the county to redo the fairgrounds. And you look across on the other side of the, of the T-PAC, and we had something that was just as much, is just as much in the eyesore as there was. So we'd have some costs that we have to incur anyway. One quick question, because I know we're running out of time. I know Commissioner France mentioned something about a three to four-year time. I'm trying to figure out how that would work. Because I'm guessing, I'm going to look at you, Mr. Renfro, the fact that that, you're probably going to have to do all of this kind of at one time. Is that kind of the idea? I mean, I'm not sure how we would, unless we debt service it, how we would do it, you know, taking X number of dollars over a three or four-year period.
Yeah, sure. Our main focus, we believe, in the best interest for really all parties is we, the money needs to be raised, pledged, and before the project is ready to go. If that can't be done, then, you know, obviously it's not meant to be. But I don't, I don't think it's in our best interest to go and say, "All right, we've got a million one raised right now. Let's get started on that and then do another round." I think the people that have stepped up and support this, they see the master plan and they're committed to that. And I firmly believe that if we can get, you know, an approval, a green light from the city that says, "Hey, we approve this, let's get the, let's get the funds raised and let's figure out what that number is so we can go to the general public and say, "Hey, we've got an opportunity here, now it's up to you and we've got a timeline to get it done." I think that's in everybody's best interest.
I'm going to look at city management's grab. We've got about three minutes left. I'm kind of going to break before four o'clock. How do you want us to proceed with this? Do you see us?
Sounds like there's, to me, there's sufficient consensus that you want to move forward. It's in the details. And I understand the desire for some additional detail. It's part of the resolution of support. So if it's acceptable to the governing body, staff will get back with Sina and Net Generation and get to work on a resolution of support and question out some of these details. I would say that, you know, there's been a lot of ideas thrown out. I don't think we have funds for all the projects that we just brainstormed, but we'll try to keep focused on this priority project and addressing, you know, the related challenges that go with it.
Okay. I would like to thank the participants. I think we've got a lot of good information here. As a commissioner, we'll try to brainstorm and come up with something that we can...
Mayor Hoppick, I don't know if it's just mine, but your voice sounds funny and everyone else's isn't. I didn't know whether it was my computer or your, it's like you have a Viberator or something on it there.
Yeah.
I would agree with that, yeah.
Mike, your computer's got a problem.
Unless Mike can do something awfully fancy with his voice.
Is that any better? No.
I wonder if you log off and back on, whether that would reset your connection maybe?
Why don't you sit over here and see what happens?
Okay.
Thanks, okay. We'll see you guys back here at four. Thanks a lot.
Thank you guys. Appreciate it.